Good evening, everybody. It's Tuesday, February 20th, 2024, 6:00 PM, and I'll call to order the Free Town Board of Selectmen meeting. This meeting will be on Zoom. Therefore, I have to read Governor Haley's order. This meeting will be available for in-person attendance and on Zoom. On March 29th, 2023, Governor Haley signed into law Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31st, 2025. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. This meeting of the Free Town Board of Selectmen will be conducted in person as well as via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public body can be found on the Town of Freetown's website, FreetownMA.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner: Download Zoom, entering the meeting ID below, calling the number listed below and entering the meeting ID listed below, or by going to the link and entering in the meeting ID listed below. Although in-person attendance is available for this meeting, every effort will be made to ensure that the public body can adequately access the proceeding in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website and YouTube channel an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay? So with that, we will be going into executive session and then coming back into open session. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Do you need to read the reasons why?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Good catch. We're going into executive session for the following reason: Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of a public body in the chair to declare, as I do, McHumber versus Town of Freetown. So without intending to motion, go into executive session.
A motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Lopes?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. All right, we're now in executive session. Okay, we are now back in open session from executive session. We do have a combined meeting with the Finance Committee. That's Gen. 2, but we're going to push that to 6:30 until Finance Committee can get a quorum. So I'm going to move down to Gen. 3. Acknowledge the following reserve fund transfers: So $4,836.54 to Bristol County Agricultural School Assessment is A, and D is $396, so Old Colony Folk Education Assessment. So was this just us slightly budgeting? Was it soft?
Yeah, just the bills came in.
No vote there, just acknowledge it then. Gen. 4, this is a discussion of vote whether to approve and not release executive session minutes from 2:05, 2024. My mic's off, sorry. It's not going to, I mean, I'm sure that one can pick me up, though.
Yeah, it's just very soft.
Yeah, all right. Sorry about that. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve and not release the executive session minutes from 2:05, 2024.
Motion made.
Carlos, you there?
He was switching.
See him there?
Here he comes.
Did you hear us, Carlos?
Can you hear me now? Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so maybe we should redo that one.
Yeah, so I entertain a motion to approve and not release the executive session minutes from 2:05, 2024.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Lopes?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. Gen. 5, this is the open session minutes from 2:05, 2024. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from 2:05, 2024.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Lopes?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. Gen. 6, this is vote whether to open the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants for 6:03, 2024, for submission on 2/1, 2024, 8:00 AM through 4/4, 2024, at 11:00 AM.
I don't know if you said the date quite right, but...
Yeah. What did I say? It's been a long week already.
Tomorrow they open at 8:00 AM through April 4th, so 2024.
I'll try to get it right this time. So I'll entertain a motion to open the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants for 6:03, 2024, for submissions on 2/21, 2024, at 8:00 AM through 4/4, 2024, at 11:00 AM.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectmen Lopes?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. All right, Gen. 7, this is vote whether to adopt the warrant for the 3/5, 2024 Presidential Primary and direct the town clerk to have said warrant duly advertised and posted in accordance with the bylaws of the Town of Freetown and the laws of the Commonwealth Massachusetts. And Cheryl was kind enough to make sure I got the language right on this one. So I'm going to do these proposed motions for Gen. 7 and Gen. 8. I'll start off with 7. So I'll entertain a motion, the Board of Selectmen to adopt the warrant for the March 5th, 2024 Presidential Primary and direct the town clerk to have said warrant duly advertised and posted in accordance with the bylaws of the Town of Freetown and the laws of the Commonwealth Massachusetts.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Lopes?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. And then Gen. 8 is special vote, tasking the police chief in consultation with the town clerk to determine the minimum number of police officers at the Presidential Primary on 3/5, 2024. So I have a proposed motion for this as well. So I'll entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen hereby delegates its authority, given under Chapter 92, Section 72 of the Acts of 2022, to detail a sufficient number of police officers or constables for each building that contains the polling places for one or more precincts at every election therein, to preserve order and to protect the election officers and supervisors from interference with their duties and to aid in enforcing the laws relating to elections to the chief of police in consultation with the town clerk.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Selectmen Lopes?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. Now we have abatements, payments, and write-offs. So for December 2023, we have $28,290.49, and January 2024, for $173,423.18. So I'll entertain a motion to approve those two abatements and write-offs.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Lopes?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. All right, Gen. 10, discussion of vote whether to provide FreetownMA.gov addresses to comply with two-factor requirements to Andrea Lima, Jaclyn Garell, John Pie, Judy Reese, and Arthur Poirier. Any issues with that?
No.
No.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the listed email addresses to comply with two-factor requirements.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Selectmen Lopes?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. All right, Gen. 11, discussion of vote whether to approve $30,000 in Bristol County ARBA funds for sewer line engineer overages. I think we actually discussed this a little bit last meeting.
Yeah, we have the sewer line engineering project that was originally contracted for $975,000. A few changes have come up. We haven't been able to find any outlay, road surveys of the four corners in that area, so we don't know where the property lines are officially. So they have to do some, like, title rundowns and research so it's going to be a little more involved than what we originally anticipated. And also with that South Main Street, where Innovation Way, where they moved South Main Street, but the original South Main Street has the sewer structures on it, they have to now survey that because that's where the sewer line is in the old South Main Street, when they surveyed the whole new South Main Street by Innovation Way. So there was an overage, and I thought it'd be best to take that out of Bristol County Opera. As we know, those funds are coming to an end. They need to be allocated, and they have to be allocated for sewer water, broadband, or they have just opened it up to what's called Title I. But this is a piece that I need to finish the project we're already working on.
Right, and I'm sure those would be good data points to have anyways, right? Just in general.
Well, it's funny because we're piggybacking the Four Corners work off of the engineering, for the sewer engineering, because we need that information for the Four Corners improvements. It's hard to put it around about when you don't really know where the property lines are.
Yeah, exactly.
So this is kind of like, it will work for both.
And it's one of the oldest parts of the town, right? So them digging up all that information's going to be quite a bit of work, so.
Yeah.
Amen. One of them dab at it.
All right, great. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve $30,000 in Bristol County ARBA funds for the sewer line engineer overages.
Motion made. Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Selectmen Lopes?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. All right, it's Gen. 12, discussion of vote on uses for the balance of the Bristol County ARBA funds.
So as you know, Opera was split into Bristol County versus federal ARBA funds. So our Bristol County Opera funds, even though the federal act says we have until 12/31/2024 to commit the funds, meaning they have to be under a purchase order by the end of the year, and we have till 2026 to actually spend them, Bristol County Opera has decided that no, they want a plan from the Town of Freetown dictating how we're going to spend the remaining funds, and they want an application pretty soon because as of 6:30, 24, they're going to pull back any funds we haven't allocated that we haven't committed, even though we technically have until 12/31, 24.
Use it or lose it.
And they basically rushed this along. Like, I didn't know I had to do this plan until very recently. So one of the things that they've added Title I, you're able to use Bristol County Opera funds for Title I, which is an act that allows you to do, like, rehabilitation, reconstruction, demolition of properties. So we had about $105,000 left in Opera, unallocated Opera funds. We are trying to get a quote on the Four South Main Street, the red building, because we know that has to be demolished, and it has asbestos. I would like to allocate the money to that project, and we are working on getting a quote. We're trying to see if we can remediate some of the asbestos because the original, I'm just going to throw it out there, the original framework of the cost is around $250,000 with the asbestos. If we remediate some of the asbestos, we can get that price down, but it's difficult to remediate because the building is in such bad shape that I don't want it to be unsafe. I can't send somebody in there if it's not safe. So we're in the process of, I shouldn't say we, Carl and Victoria are working diligently on this project and getting me the information that I need. So it should have it very soon. So what I would like to do is put forth with a plan that says we will spend the money on that project. If I cannot spend it on that project, then that project I was thinking is the schoolhouse for rehabilitation. $100,000 might get me engineering and construction drawings and start that process on that building. So both of them would be considered Title I projects. So that's sort of my plan. $100,000 towards the demolition, and if not, if I can't get that project approved, then I would use it towards the schoolhouse rehabilitation.
All right. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to think of, we've really, it's six and one half dozen in another. We need to do both things, right? So if we're going to use the money on both, I like the direction you're going and saying, okay, let's try and use it for the demolition. If we can't make it work, then we move it over to here. But that's probably the most immediate need, right? Is having to get that building ripped down in a hurry. Do you feel, or do you think getting?
Well, I just worry about that building and the shape that it's in. I just don't want it to fall down because of the location of it. If it just falls down, it'll be in the middle of Main Street, and it will be dangerous, and it will cost us a lot more money if it becomes an emergency, right? So it's sort of one of those, you just don't know when, but you don't want to find out when. I feel like we need to address that issue that's been, you know... Someone asked me why it hadn't been taken care of. The town took that in tax title in 1994. It's been 30 years. I don't have answers why nothing's been done to this date. I just know the state that it's in currently needs to be addressed, and also to clean that corner up and make it look a little bit better, you know? But more for safety. I don't know when it's going to fall down.
Yeah. I mean, that works for me. Carlos, you have any thoughts on this?
No, I'm going to piggyback off what both of you are saying, all of you are. As immediate need at the end of days, that building, which does present an issue, you know? Like Deb said, if it does come down, it will not only cost more, but then it will endanger lives that are potentially driving or walking by. So anything we could do to remedy that situation is the best approach. So of course, like you guys have said, if it doesn't work out and you have to go to the schoolhouse for rehab, then, you know, that's also an option as well. So like Jared said, a half dozen here and six over there, right? So thank you. So I have no other further comments on that.
All right, so I think the motion here, I'll just pretty much say that, try to use it on the Four South Main Street, and if not, schoolhouse. All right, so I'll entertain a motion that the balance of the Bristol County ARBA funds is allocated towards, first, for South Main Street, and if not that, then the schoolhouse.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Lopes?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. All right, Mar, are you ready to go? Okay, just let me know, just.
Someone, Frank Anderson and CB? I don't know who CB is. Not yours. Somebody's calling in, hold on.
Got a little technology.
Hans, is that you? Does its phone number end in 887?
Can you guys still hear me? Just while I'm here? Okay. Thank you.
Whoever just called in, could you please identify yourself?
Bob Alderson.
Okay, Bob, great. Thanks.
Yes, I now have.
Okay. So do you want to call your being to order first, or how?
All right. All right, it being 6:31, and having a quorum present, I will call the Free Town Finance Committee meeting to order. Present is Margaret French, Cara Lees, and on Zoom is Katie Kalida, Bob Alderson. Anyone else show up? Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So for our joint portion of this meeting, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, we have a discussion of vote on whether to approve the following appointments: Kayla Churchill, the Finance Committee, effective 2/21/2024, through the annual town election, which is on 4/1, 2024. So I guess I'll kick it over to Finance Committee. Mar, do you have any kind of thoughts on this?
Yeah. In December, Kayla came to the Finance Committee meeting. She presented a letter of interest. She came to the meeting and spoke with us. And one of the questions that was asked was what her long-term plan was. Was she planning on running for Finance Committee at the next annual election? She said yes. And based on that, we thought continuity-wise, and we agreed, we voted, to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that she be appointed to the committee. However, Ms. Churchill did take out papers for the Finance Committee but did not return them. So she will not be running for Finance in April, and it seems not very continuous to put someone on the committee, appoint someone on the committee for one month.
Understood. Yeah, that makes sense to me. So it's because it'd be from tomorrow through 4/1, right?
Right.
Yep. Okay. So in that case, do we vote on this, or how do we?
We, I think it has to go up for a vote, yes.
And it's the combination of both boards, which was the original.
Yeah.
And it has to be roll call.
Has to be roll call, okay. All right.
We start with them, and then, well, how? I think, I'm just trying to think of what we did the last time. We had the other board start, right? And then we went.
Yeah, just a roll call vote. Just started with all the members.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we can start with Finance. So I will entertain a motion to... Or is there a motion or just a vote?
I think it would just be, I think the last time we just did a roll call vote by yes or no.
Okay.
Or the last time we picked between two people, so we said who we were going for.
Yeah, whether we point Kayla Churchill. I mean, make sure nobody has any questions or anything to say, and then just go to vote.
Okay. Is there anyone, Finance Committee, that has any comment, any questions?
Katie, we can't hear you.
Oh, I am muted, Katie. She has a question.
We did. I think she ended up calling in the last time. I still can't hear you, Katie.
Tell her.
I can hear you, Katie.
Margaret's going to give you a call.
Carlos, can you hear?
Carlos, you can hear?
Yes, I can hear. I can hear. Well, I heard her, but she's now gone.
That's weird.
Not me.
Hi, Margaret.
Hi, Katie.
I'm sorry, the microphone is... It's odd that Carlos could hear me.
It did for a second.
All right, did you have something you wanted to ask, or?
I wasn't sure. I heard a lot of background noise on the phone. I didn't know if Kayla had, you know, made a statement about why she is interested in the Finance Committee for the short term and why she's not continuing to run.
Kayla, feel free to speak. Yeah.
Hi, my name's Kayla Churchill, resident of Freetown. So unfortunately, when I got all the signatures, I got enough, but it was to my understanding that if there's any, like, foreign marks on the paper, that it completely disqualifies the signatures. So that's why I didn't drop it off. But I talked to Francis Gavin's office. They said I could go in as a write-in ballot, so I was going to get stickers and go in as a write-in ballot. It was to my understanding that nobody else pulled for that position. So I was still going to try to run for that. I just, the only reason I didn't turn them in again is because there was some, you know, foreign marks on the paper that would have disqualified it if I had 120 signatures.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. One question, though. So I know you did pull papers. You're going to run for Board of Selectmen, right?
Correct.
And this is, I just don't know this. I don't think I've seen it. Can you run for Board of Selectmen and be a write-in candidate for?
I called Ethics.
You can, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Interesting. All right. Understood.
I think she had a second question. It was, why was I interested? Was that your question?
No, no, you clarified that for me. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or concerns, or should we do a vote here?
All right, so there's a vote on the table to appoint Ms. Churchill to the Finance Committee. Bob Alderson.
I would have to say no to that. I think it's probably a good idea for her to be a writing candidate. I can't imagine it being a position to that.
I couldn't really hear him, but could I just ask, why is that not a good decision if it's a writing candidate? Especially if nobody else pulled the papers, nobody else is, you know, sending a letter of interest. I'm just curious what makes that a bad thing.
Can I, sorry, Cheryl Estrella, town clerk. I just want to make, clarify Kayla's statement. So there are three open positions currently for Finance Committee. There are two standard three-year appointments, excuse me, positions available. We had three people pull papers for those. We had two return. Ms. Churchill did not return. And then there was a second term, a second option for a two-year unexpired term. So we had Cara Beth Lees pull papers. We also had Kayla pull papers, and Cara did return them. So I just wanted to make that point of clarification. So I just wanted to make that point of clarification. And yes, you can go in as a write-in candidate, um, and also be on the ballot in a different position. In regards to the stickers, I would just would appreciate that you contact my office because those are brand new machines. And there's, they have to be a certain length, a certain diameter, so as to not get stuck on the rollers and make fault on the machines that we just paid twenty-two thousand dollars for. Thank you.
All right, so.
So I, I think Bob's all set.
Should I add one other thing? Um, just because where Kara and I did pull the same papers, I think Kara is fantastic at her job, so I'm not running for her position. We have already spoke prior to that. I'll be running for the three-year term where she's running for the two.
Okay.
Just for the record.
All right, um, back to the vote. Katie Kalida.
I will say yes.
Okay. Carol Lees.
I'm going to hold my vote as yes.
All right, and Margaret French says no. And did anyone else come in?
Emily, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right, Emily, we have discussed that, um, Ms. Churchill is planning on running a write-in campaign for a seat on the finance committee. We are doing a roll call vote on whether to appoint her to the committee. Carol Lees has said yes. Bob Alderson has said no. Katie Kalida has said yes. Margaret French has said no. How do you vote?
Um, I vote no.
All right.
Selectmen Loops.
What's, so we off, what's the score right now? Not the score, but what's the tally?
I see three no's, two yeses. Do you agree, Margaret?
Yep.
Yes.
Hold on, you're cutting out. Go ahead, proceed while I.
Three no's. Two yeses.
Did you, did you hear Carlos?
He's on, you're on mute, Carlos.
Can you guys hear me now?
There you go, yep.
There you go. All right, so we have three, you said two yeses and three no's.
Correct.
You know, last meeting, we discussed directly with Ms. Churchill, the pull papers. I I really wanted to see pull papers. I truly did. With the writing invalid, I trying to think here. If you're serious about running for the finance committee, I'm gonna say no. Pull, please pull the papers or writing election. I just too much, I asked you last time for to pull papers and you did. And this time around, you you're gonna pull a, um, the terminology, um, the writing ballot. That's what I was trying to get to. So I look forward to seeing your name on the writing ballots.
Okay.
Selectmen.
Select Matthews? Very sorry.
Selectmen Zager?
Yep.
I'm gonna say no.
And Selectmen Matthews?
No. Okay.
That's six no, two yes.
All right.
All right, um, I will entertain a motion to close the finance committee meeting.
I'll motion.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Was that you, Katie, or Emily?
It was Emily.
And Bob, you're seconding?
Yep.
All right, um, all in favor of adjourning. Carol Lees.
Yes.
Bob Alderson.
Yes.
Emily Ann.
Yes.
Katie Kalida.
Yes.
And Margaret French says, yes, we are adjourned as of.
Forty-four.
Thank you, six forty-four.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to agenda item thirteen. This is, uh, discuss the fiscal year twenty twenty-five regional school budget. It sounds like a loaded one.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I mean, basically, I just, the school committee meet it, meet, the school committee met and they presented the budget, um, last Wednesday night. They dropped off the budget books. They only dropped off three, so Luanne was kind enough to make copies of the budget books, which this basically is just to give the two budget books to you. Carlos picked his up from the office so that you have them to start looking at. Basically, they're, they're asking for forty-six million, five hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. An increase of three point seven nine percent over last year's. However, there is some missing information that we are trying to get, uh, before we can fully understand the budget as presented. But it's just come out and we'll be, uh, FinCon, Margaret, myself will be attending the meetings, trying to get the full picture of what the budget, what they presented looks like. Like I said, right now, we don't have all the information, but it's just a matter of giving it to you. If you had any questions or concerns right out of the gate, um, then we can discuss them. It's an increase of roughly, I think, seven hundred thousand dollars to the town of Freetown. We're hoping to get that down.
Yep.
Um, after the big increase that happened last year, although the assessment wasn't a large assessment, the budget increased quite a bit last year, but state aid in in increased, so it offset the increase. So there's, this is quite an increase on top of that increase, so.
All right.
We'll see.
All right, so we'll do our homework and review this and then.
Just to let you know, the missing pieces in the budget request has already gone out.
Okay.
To get those pieces and it'll be disseminated to everybody who needs it.
Okay, perfect.
So that was all that is, just so you have that, same, you have the same information now that I have.
Okay, thank you. Great. All right, thank you. So I'll move on to agenda item fourteen.
Yeah, these are exciting things.
All right, yeah. All right, discussion of vote whether to approve and sign the following purchase orders, uh, A through C. So A, we have Will Scott trailer an amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-four cents for the accounts on aging pods.
So you know, this is, this is what we've been waiting for. I usually sign the purchase orders, but where this is such a large amount, I felt best to come before the board.
Yep.
It's actually decreased. Um, they had included a sales tax in that number that I was trying to get clarification for them, but they finally came back today. It was fourteen thousand dollars for sales tax that's been removed. So we're at two hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Yep, two, two, seven, eight, seven.
So that's exciting because we, you know, we have a total budget of three hundred thousand for this project. And I I have to build a vestibule.
Yeah, so that will help.
Entryway. So we may just be close to our budget when we're done with this. So, but I'm super excited to get the pods moving. This will stop the ball rolling to purchase them.
Awesome, great.
So that's that.
So then B is modular communications in the amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents for the radio communication project.
Yeah, so the next two are both the radio tower communication project that I've been working on for quite some time. We have just been, I don't know, every time I turn around, there's been a holdup with this project, but I think we're finally there. These are the last two purchase orders. And again, they're just large amounts and I wanted the board to sign them as opposed to me where I usually do sign them. However, I have vetted them. I have gone back and forth with the companies, made sure that the, what we're ordering is correct and and, you know, there is no extras. I think I talked about this last week.
The warranty.
The fifty-six thousand dollar warranty that I had them.
That supplement, I've been thinking about that all week.
Yeah, that had them removed. So, um, this is the final step in getting the final bit of equipment we need to install and finish the radio project, which it's a fourteen-week lead time on the equipment. But super excited to finally put this, this piece of this to bed, because we've been probably working on this just since December, November, December, just trying to get the purchase orders where they needed to be.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say, see, for the record, so it's Bear Communications Inc. in the amount of two hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars and seventy-nine cents for the radio communication. So, all right.
And I, you brought it up and I'm glad you did that. You've been vetting these, right? So it's not, you know, you're coming to us, which we appreciate, but you've also been vetting them and doing your own homework. So.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I definitely would sign them, but usually we have a contract or something, and there is a contract that you see coming down for part of this, but this is basically equipment orders. So it's a purchase order. I just, I just wanted you to be as transparent as we could be and you could look at them if you have any questions. But absolutely, this is probably the fifth rendition of these POs. We've been back and forth.
Yeah.
The kind, and I don't wanna drag it out, but the council on aging, we had three hundred, right? And you said it came back at about two twenty-seven?
Yeah.
So we have seventy-three and what, we have site work.
That's the vestibule.
Vestibule, which you said really isn't much because it's really just a connection.
The vestibule will probably, because it's a municipal project, will probably, I I would budget seventy-five thousand.
So we still might come in over budget.
We're still gonna come in over budget, but it's not gonna be crazy over budget. Um, and you know, Chuck will help us as much as he can with the site work. So I I know he's gonna shave down a lot of expense there. So it's gonna be doable. It's not gonna be crazy.
So here, here was my reason for asking, because I thought we were gonna have extra and we had talked about possibly building a patio. So I was hopeful that there was extra so that we could build a patio.
Yeah, I think, I, I think Chuck is, I think the highway is gonna help us with that, but also I'm, I'm, I wanted to reach out to Bristol Aggie School to see if it's a project that they might take on if we buy the materials.
That's, that's a great idea.
So one of my friend's sons goes there and he was recently constructing a patio at their school. They were doing.
So won't even be the first one. We get the second.
Practicing.
Yeah, so I I thought that would be a great, if they could do it. I don't know. I have to reach out to the school and see if that's something that they could do for us. Um, so we'll see.
All right, great. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve and sign the purchase orders A through C that we just discussed.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops? Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. All right, and then the next two are just the agreements associated with agenda item fourteen. So, um, I'll entertain a motion to vote. Uh, sorry, I'll entertain a motion to approve and sign the agreement between the town of Freetown and Bear Communications, Inc. for the installation services for the radio communication project.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. And then ten, I'm sixteen, I'll entertain a motion to authorize, oh, sorry, I misspoke there. Uh, never mind, sixteen has nothing to do with fourteen. Uh, so sixteen is discussion of vote whether to authorize overspending, uh, the snow removal account for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. I was waiting for this one. I knew this was gonna happen. But you've been bucky the last like two years, though.
Yeah. Yeah, last year, we never had to do it.
Yeah. So, because what, we budget a hundred thousand?
Budget a hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty?
Fifty, yeah.
And then, do we know where at yet so far this year?
No, it's the salt. This is, I know we purchased a lot of salt. And even though the snowstorm was one day, then the roads melt and freeze and they have to continue to come out every night to salt and sand the roads.
I will say the roads are in good shape, though. Okay, any questions, Jared, Carlos?
No, the roads are certainly better than the roads I have up here. So, good job to Chuck's crew and everybody else. So, um, this is a no-brainer.
Okay, and I mean, so we don't have to put a specific dollar value on the overspending. It's just that we're just gonna go over budget.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to authorize overspending, uh, the snow removal account for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. All right, ten, I'm seventeen, this is a discussion of vote whether to accept donation in the amount of five hundred dollars from Borges Bros. Trucking Co. In support of Earth Day twenty twenty-four event. First, just say thank you to Borges, appreciate it. That's, uh, very kind. Any comments or concerns on this?
No, um, I'm, I'm, can't thank them enough. They're great for the job.
I'm assuming this is like last year, we just took donations for like the shirts and the surfaces, like garbage bags and all that.
Was that, yeah, that's, yeah.
It's come out.
That's, I can't believe that was only a year ago. It was, I guess it was April, right?
Hopefully I don't have to go to the doctor for poison ivy again, would you?
I had an interesting day myself.
It's always fun.
Okay, so that, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, accept donation of five hundred dollars from the Borges Bro Trucking, Inc. in support of Earth Day twenty twenty-four.
Motion made.
Second.
Second.
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. All right, um, so agenda item eighteen, discussion of vote whether to approve the contract between the town of Freetown and Banner Environmental for non-traditional work plan for Four South Main Street, Sonnet, Mass.
So this is for Four South Main Street with the asbestos.
Yep.
We have to create a plan and submit it to the DEP to get approval. And, uh, so this banner is going to do that for us, like thirty-one hundred dollars.
That's actually reasonable.
Yeah. Just something we wanna have in place. So when we're ready to go, we have it done.
Yeah. And I feel like there's gotta be some state and federal money out there for clean asbestos, you know? I mean, I know you, you know where to look, but.
I don't think so. I think.
Surprising, just because there's so many old buildings that have.
You know, the, the Title I grants come under, um, CDBG, the, the, um, state block grants, so to speak, but a lot of them are based on low income, you know, low income towns. And they give you points based on how much low income population you have. And because Freetown doesn't have a large low income population, we don't get the points. So we go right into those grants upside down. We, and we don't get them. And I have gone to the Boston to talk to them in the past and they said, basically, we would have to write an absolute perfect grant application in every other way, shape or form, other than that, because we're gonna take like, we're gonna lose ten points right out of the gate. So they said the chances of us getting a block grant are very slim. And that's where the money would come from for a rehab or a blight situation, under a blight situation. We are looking for grants at all, all times to do the demolition. So if I get one, then, you know, we might, we could reallocate the money opera. But what's gonna happen with Bristol County Opera is as of June thirtieth, they're gonna take all the money back and they said they're gonna reallocate it. I don't know what that means. I don't know what they're gonna reallocate.
I don't wanna find out.
They're gonna reallocate it back to towns? Are they gonna reallocate it to themselves? I'm not really sure.
Okay. All right. So with that, any comments or concerns on this?
No, no, I'm sure not. Thank you.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract between the town of Freetown and Banner Environmental for non-traditional work plan for Four South Main Street of Sonnet, Mass.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. All right, I'll now kick it over to Carlos or personnel.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, item agenda number nineteen, ratify the acceptance of Donald P. Souza Junior's resignation as highway laborer effective two five twenty twenty-four, uh, in our page eighty-four and our, and our crypt notes there. Thank you, Donald, for, for your time with the highway department. Item agenda number twenty will be stayed into the next, uh, meeting, uh, for executive session. Which brings us to item agenda twenty-one, discussion of vote whether to approve the reappointment of Sandra M. Delilah. Sorry, Sandra, I said that incorrectly, as board registrar for the Republican Party effective four one twenty twenty-four through three thirty-one twenty twenty-seven, which is pages eighty-eight, eighty-nine of our packet. Yeah, I, I think it's great. Uh, more people involved in our politics, the better we are. So, uh, welcome back. Thank you for staying on and, uh, good luck. What, what do you, can you guys hear me? You all disappeared.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna call a vote.
Okay, okay. Oh, yeah, thank you. I entertain the motion to approve the reappointment of Sandra M. Delilah as board registrar, Republican, effective four one twenty twenty-four through three thirty-one twenty twenty-seven.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. All right.
I need one for, um, to ratify that acceptance of Donald's.
All right, so I think you, we need a vote to ratify that, Carlos.
Oh, I entertain the motion, uh, to accept the resignation of Donald P. Souza's resignation as highway laborer effective two five twenty twenty-four.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. All right.
All right.
So Jared, Board of Park Commissioner?
All right, so, uh, agenda item number twenty-two, discussion of the ball field leases. Um, the reason why this is on the meeting agenda tonight is it's been, you know, been going on, as you guys know, for quite a while. And there's a lot of moving pieces to this. So I really want you guys to have the information to look at. You know, what, what the boards are coming back to us with, you know, each one. We have not heard back from everyone, but we have got back some valuable input. From different, you, are you trying to bring it up? I don't know. He's trying to bring it up.
Yeah, it's gonna be up there.
So, um,
I think I have.
You know, I really want you guys to have it, and I don't think that we're going to conquer much tonight. I really, you know, it's school vacation week. So there's a lot of parents that are off, you know, whatever. So we didn't think it was a good time to try and get everyone in, but I really did want it in front of you. You know, a lot of the, the comments that come back, I think, are pretty easy workarounds. Some not so much. Uh, some of it, I truthfully don't, I think that we're gonna have to give to council because if it's, um, doing with, dealing with, um, different, uh, different insurances and stuff and seeing if that's okay. So, um, I don't know if you guys had a chance to look through that at all.
I saw a lot of long contracts. I didn't have, didn't really read them with a fine-tooth comb, that's for sure.
Yeah, no. So, um, is, you know, like I said, I, I'm, I don't know, there's not a ton of stuff. There, there, up on the board right now, we have K R R field. There was some, some discussion on how to, um, kinda divide this field. There's been a lot of questions as far as, um, you know, who's gonna pay for trash, who's gonna clean it up? The concession stands. So that's all things that we're all gonna have to work through. And I think, um, you know, I really, I guess I'm also gonna look for the board's guidance on what you think the best way to go about this is to try and get everyone in here together. I'm trying to make, I don't want it to become, um, everyone in here and everyone trying to argue their point, because I don't think that accomplishes much.
Yeah, it's, it's a tricky one, right? Because I almost feel like it's like if, you know, is there a, is there a one representative from each of those groups?
Yeah, that's kind of what we've been going, you know, we, we do send it off to one representative.
And like maybe, I don't think it makes sense to do it in like an open meeting, but if there was like a, you know, maybe a side, like a meeting that you had with them, something of that nature, just to kind of.
Yeah.
There's gonna be winners, there's, there's gonna be, no one's gonna be excited at the end, right? I mean, there's gonna be, people are gonna be, but that's the, probably the most fair way that's gonna end up.
And that, that was always kind of the thing since day one. The way I've approached this is, is that the end of the day, we're never gonna give everyone, I think, every want and need, but we're trying to do what's best for everyone.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I mean, Debbie, do you have any thoughts or?
No, I, I mean, just that, you know, I'm not sure the board realizes the field hockey has withdrawn their request. They're not, they're not interested in any space. So there's that space that, um, maybe, maybe be reallocated to, um, soccer. Um, because it's actually better, I think, better than maybe the soccer area was. It's more further along. It's gonna need less work to get it where it needs to go. So I think, I don't know that the board was aware of that.
I was not aware of that.
Last time we talked. So that's really the only thing. And really, and the other two, I mean, the little Fenway and the, um, the football field, they, they're pretty content with what they got going on. It's just pretty much divvying this one up and then determining how we allocate the, like, the concession stands and the parking and whatnot, so that it's all fair amongst them and that our language is reflective of that. So, um, and who, you know, who's, who's gonna be responsible for mowing the grass and who's gonna be responsible for the trash, because at different times, different ball or, uh, different organizations will be using the fields more than others. So, um, that's really the only things. I think at this point to sort of, um, riddle through in terms of what, you know, what we're gonna put out there. Um, in the meantime, you know that the, the, um, batting cage, sorry, it wasn't coming to me, was destroyed by somebody. So a car ran through it. So that is, um, we're putting through an insurance claim.
So that is um, we're putting through an insurance claim that we still.
We just got the quote from the fencing company to do that and I shared it back with the person's insurance company and he said he would get back to me next week.
Yeah, so I know that there was some talk about not, not having the batting cage or having the batting cage. So now we have this insurance claim out there.
We'll have to talk to, it's a valid point, because I mean, if there, if no one's using it, then what's the point of putting it back up? So uh maybe we can reach out.
No one was using it because it was in shambles. It was, it was really in great condition.
We can't hear you, Carlos.
That was down. So it wasn't being used because it's.
We can't hear you.
I think he said it was in shambles. It was in tough shape before the accident.
Yeah, it wasn't great.
The connection was pretty poor. It was, it was usable. It was, the lawn was. Um so I'm glad it's fixed in and the break.
Yeah, Carlos, I don't know if you can hear me, but we're having a very hard time hearing you. You're breaking up a lot, so. So anyway, so what we'll do is we will reach back out to, you know, really, it's, you know, baseball and softball and see if it's something that's worth putting back up. Uh because it wasn't, I mean, I can say it wasn't being used before, and the only reason why I can assume that is because of the the height of the grass and everything on the inside of it and the condition of it. But maybe if it's redone, then it will be used, so. And and Debbie, great point bringing up the whole field hockey thing. I thought it was big of them to come back and say, listen, they they've lost a lot of um enrollment. And so they kind of putting focus towards other places, so they decided to pull out. So, which was nice, because now it gave us that space. And uh you know, soccer does have some pretty big numbers, so it would be nice to be able to give them something that's a lot more ready to use versus that backfield that they could be for future use. But um, so yeah, so that was really just, you know, still a lot of moving pieces. Um kind of wanted you guys to have what everyone's thoughts were on it um on paper. And so that was the the whole uh point of that being on the agenda tonight, so.
Okay.
You know, more more to come, but I I kind of do like your idea, Trevor, of uh possibly me just sitting with them with each representative ahead of time and, you know, kind of getting, getting a good feel from them um rather than having it in official board meeting.
Yeah.
Um you know, we'll have to discuss.
More productive, yeah.
Yeah. So uh moving on, agenda item number twenty three, discussion of whether to approve the removal of the old shed and sign stand from Long Pond Boat Ramp. So this is the original uh shed that was put up. And now it's it's there and not really being used. We have the new one out front. So um it really isn't serving a purpose.
Yeah, it's, they're redoing the parking lot. The state is redoing the parking lot. And there's a, it's a really um tight for, for space, as if you've ever gone down there on the weekend. So it's really to find a spot to put the portage on so that it's safe when you come out of the portage on, you're not walking into a parking lot where people are trying to back in and out of boats. So I thought the, you know, we we talked about it, Luanne's been instrumental in this about taking the shed down because it's like a concrete pad already there. We can put the portage on there and they can walk towards, away from sort of where the boats go in the water and not risk um getting run over by a boat. And so it's just really so tight on space that it made sense to take the shed down and the state seemed to be amenable to that.
Doug Cameron's fine.
So.
Are they gonna actually pave the boat ramp itself, not just the parking lot? No?
No, the boat ramp project, he said that it depended on the water level. If, because the water's so high right now, they wouldn't be able to do any maintenance on it, but they may be able to do some basic maintenance on it if the water level is much lower by the time they're gonna do it, but replacing the actual ramp will be a totally different project.
Yeah.
Understood.
Carlos, any questions, concerns? Alright, so um with with that, I will entertain a motion to uh approve the removal of the old uh shed and sign stand from Long Pond Boat Ramp.
Alright, I'll make that motion.
He's locked up.
Do you have a second?
It's locked.
I'll. I'm just gonna second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
We got a second.
There he is. Selectman Loops?
Yeah, he he said, yeah.
Yes. Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Alright, agenda item number twenty four, discussion and vote on whether to approve the parking lot striping proposed by the Department of Fishing Game Office of fishing and boating access for the Long Pond Boat Ramp Parking Lot Repavement Project. Blech, could not spit that one out. So yeah, so this is um, you know, to that point, they're gonna repave, they're gonna uh mill down and repave the whole parking lot. Fortunately, not the ramp itself at this point, but that is in pretty rough shape over there. You know, there's some pretty big holes and stuff, so I think it's great.
Yep.
That is gonna get done and so much improvement.
Awesome.
I mean, I really, it's pretty straightforward. Uh they they gave us all the stuff that their permits and everything that they're going through, so seems like they got everything in order that they're gonna do. Uh I don't know if I remember seeing the time.
I like the hand drawn uh in the in the file, everything's hand drawn, how it's, yeah. Or if you scroll down to like the uh, I don't know if you have it.
I have the stuff that's in there.
So yeah, so you have the um you have the forms that they filed and everything, and it seems like everything's good.
Alright, cool.
Yeah, Carlos, any questions? And I shouldn't even be asking you, because you probably can't answer me.
Is parking lot in any period of time?
Sorry, I missed that, Carlos.
Yeah, so alright, anyways, so um with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the parking lot striping proposed by Department of Fish and Game Office of Fishing and Boating Access for Long Pond Boat Ramp Parking Lot Repavement Project.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops? Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. You put in the minutes, just bad connection, I don't know.
He chuckled.
Alright, agenda item number twenty five, discussion vote on location and funding for pickleball court. So this is a, this is an exciting one. So you know, as you know, we we recently got, well, I don't know, I'm sure you saw, but we got seventy five hundred dollars towards building a pickleball court. Chuck had given us some preliminary numbers. That puts us at about a little over fourteen thousand dollars, he thinks, to to construct it.
Yeah.
You know, obviously some pretty roundabout numbers, but um, you know, we we do have some representatives here tonight. I'm not sure if anyone from Open Space, anyone has anything that they want to comment about it, but, you know, we we've had some pretty preliminary stuff about like where to put it, what makes the most sense. And obviously, we do have some restrictions because of, you know, previous leases. Say we can't just go and put it at Central Park, because it's already leased out, as you all know. But um you know, what, one of the things we had talked about was possibly putting it down on Hathaway Park, because there's not much going on there. And we feel like it'd be a good location for it with parking and space. Um I'm not sure if anyone has any comments or anything from.
Yeah, so um, this is um.
Is it green?
Now it's green. Hello, hi?
You just wanna state your name.
Yeah, so I'm Brian Almeida, uh co-chair of the Open Spaces um and Recreation Advisory Committee. Uh so we did discuss it our last meeting uh about possible locations and we did come up with Hathaway as one of the suggestions. But we really um would like to see both sides of town having access to it. So Hathaway is kind of a sonnet centric. And so we um also suggest potentially doing um the cassette, like the beach, since that 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 parking lot is so large and so underutilized, maybe using some of that space as well. And who knows, maybe we can have like a east versus west league going on or something, a pickleball tournaments. But yeah, those are the two locations that we really kind of discussed um to try to have some equity.
Yeah, um I listen, I'm, I'm all for it and I guess we just need to figure out um fitting in that space over there. I guess I'm thinking, I'm just trying to think of what's leased out space wise right now over there.
So it's part of the town beach park, right? So there's a lot of wasted space. So it really shouldn't be a.
Yeah.
Leasing problem. Uh but I, you know, you guys just asked for our opinion and that was what I, we.
No, no, absolutely. We're asking for your opinion for a reason, you know, so we appreciate it. So I'm just trying to think and, because, you know, as someone, we we joke about this all the time. As someone, I grew up on the east side of town, I now live in a sonnet, you know, we talk about the town hall, right? And what I was saying, it's easy for me because I live in a sonnet now. But to the person who lives in Freetown, almost in Rochester, not quite so easy. So um, so I, it's it's a valid thing. So I don't, do you, do you guys have any thoughts or anything about it? I mean, it's I'm just excited that we're gonna be able to do something different for short money, right? I think, you know, it's um a different sport that people will hopefully have some fun playing. This is what it's all about. We can do it for such short money. You know?
I, and like, I think where will be more utilized is the other part of it, right? Like, is that, and it's kind of like, where's like population density? You know, like, who's gonna go, you, like, I don't, I don't know what they, and it could be East Freetown, right? I'm more familiar with, like, I could see Hathaway Park being a good spot for just, you know, they're both actually pretty locations. It could be.
We were saying and, not or. I feel like you guys don't get, I'm saying both. Yes, and.
Oh, you wanna build two, you're saying two.
I got you. So then we can have an east versus west.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Joke there, yeah.
Well, I think that that.
Well, I mean, I mean, I think if you keep on putting everything in a so. I had no idea what you just said, Carlos. I think if we keep on putting everything in a sonnet and all our development is in a sonnet, well, then what's happening with East Freetown? You are dividing the town still, right? So like, if we, if we put in both and maybe have a league that unites both, then maybe we're doing some repair work or some possible, I don't know, joining of the two groups.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I'm not, I'm not opposed to either or. I mean, I think we have to pick one at this point, like, we we don't have the funding to to build two. Even though I say it's short money, I mean, you're now talking, it's gonna cost us roughly, according to what Chuck's coming up with, roundabout numbers, seventy five hundred dollars to the town. And then if we do two of them, now we're talking about just over twenty two thousand dollars. It's, you know, quite a bit of money. It's not a astronomical amount of money, but it still is um spending a lot more than what we had originally talked about, so. And and then I guess the other part of it is we need to see how many people actually want to play. Because if we build it and no one comes, then it would be a shame us to build two of them when no one comes. But hopefully, hopefully, we build one and we don't have enough space.
I can say there's other towns in our area that have recently put in pickleball courts and they're well utilized.
Yeah.
Well utilized.
That is not surprising. It seems to be very popular.
A lot of places will retrofit like um old tennis courts that aren't used. And they'll keep a tennis court and maybe convert two others to multiple pickleballs.
That's happening a lot. I think we need to start somewhere because this will be um you know, a little bit of work. Chuck's gonna do a lot of the work as we 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 keep having him do where, as much as he can do to save money. So let's see how this goes. But our thought process was, I don't know what the um basketball court looks like down at Hathaway, but I've heard it's not in good shape. So the thought process was to take the basketball court out and put it there. Because the hard pack's already there, the base for this is already there. So I don't know what the 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 thoughts are about that. I don't think you can use the basketball court in the shape that it's in. I do know the one over here at Fenway Park gets used quite a bit, so it's good to have a basketball court in town to be utilized. But um that's sort of our thoughts. Uh speaking to Chuck, I didn't talk to him about the beach parking lot, but I can certainly go back and run that by uh different people, see what the thought processes on that. Always, I mean, we joked about putting it in the town hall parking lot, but um, I mean, I think you have to think about safety too, you know what I mean? People using it and you don't want people to be driving up, but it is exciting. It's gonna be something different for the town, I think.
Yeah, that that makes sense to me too, like Hathaway Park, like, that's the easy one. And then I think if that works out, then we try to get some funding from, for another one.
Yeah, so basically, because to your point, it will be easier and faster to build it at Hathaway Park first, right? So maybe we just do it with that one, see how it takes off. And I apologize to the people in my on the east side of town, you know, so um, but I think it's a positive thing at the end of the day, right? So.
Yeah.
Let's get people involved and then it'll be a good thing for us to have to come back and plead for another, you know, fifteen thousand dollars to to build another, so.
Well, these grants come out every year, right? And then every year they come out, these grants, so maybe that we could do it again next year in the East Freetown. And the residual funding sources, my thought process was either APA, federal APA money, which we we still have a substantial amount that also needs to be committed by the end of this year. Or um there's the selectmen's donation account that that has money and that's not taxed, neither, it's not tax levy, either one of those.
Yeah.
Um there's, there is twenty five thousand dollars in the selectmen's donation account. So um it it'd just be up to um the board in terms of where they'd like to pull the money from. Our federal treasury APA money, we have committed uh five hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of uh nine hundred and fifty. So there's about four hundred thousand dollars left in that. Uh and maybe a little bit more because we invested that. We do have some interest income on that, that, those funds. So just so you have a reference, we have that and then the twenty five thousand of the donation, selectmen donation account. Both of those funds are not tax levy. Both of those funds can be used for any purpose town related that the selectmen.
One will be faster, if, so if.
The one I can, either one, I can appropriate either funds. I I I I would tend to say APA because I need to allocate this money or we lose it, you know what I mean? It's it's not a ton of money, but.
Well, maybe if this one goes well, then we can.
That's the other thing. I mean, if it does, if we can get it in, I think, I I mean, people pay a lot of taxes, they like to see something back for it. So I think it's exciting. We'll see how, what the, what the, I have had people call, asking for pickleball courts. This is kind of how this all came about. They do call me and say, can we have pickleball courts? I'm like, no, I don't know, you know, see what we can do. And then when the grant came through and Luanne was working on it, I'm like, see if they can do a pickleball court and they agreed, so. Um just kind of came together this way.
So federal APA, does that work for you?
Federal APA works for me.
Alright.
It's not, it's not our tax dollars, so to speak, so um let's do it, so. Alright, so I don't really, that's, that doesn't need to be called into the vote.
I think it does. I think, because it says vote on location and funding.
Oh, yeah, and funding, yeah, alright, gotcha.
I mean, the funding I can bring back before you. I just, you know.
Yeah, no, this, alright, so um with that, I will entertain a motion to locate a pickleball court at Hathaway Park in place of the basketball court. Funding it through the grant and any residual funding through federal APA funds.
Alright, I'll make that motion.
I'm gonna second it.
We gotta second Carlos.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops? He's trying. Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Agenda item number twenty six, um discussion vote on next steps for the Open Space and Recreational Advisory Committee. So um, you know, first of all, thank you, thank you, thank you, because, you know, you guys have done a lot of valuable work and it doesn't go unnoticed, so um I guess you're asking us, right, like, what what you want guidance from us? Uh you know, what, how did this all come about?
So, yeah, so Amanda Barlow, uh co-chair of the Freetown Open Space and Recreational Advisory Committee. Am I echoing or is that?
No, I think it's.
Carlos trying to call. So uh the reason that we wanted to get on the agenda with you guys today is because uh we've, you know, we've been meeting over the past three years. We just finished up the open space recreation plan. It was approved by the state. So um the reason that we're coming here is because we want to propose to you, the select board, that there be a permanent open space committee put in place in town um as written in the open space plan. Uh while this advisory committee here, uh we worked really diligently over the past three years to to get the plan moving and and worked with SERP Ed. And obviously, many folks from different uh towns and boards, we think that in order to affect. We think that in order to effectively administer the plan, there should be like an established body with the authority to execute the goals and the objectives, so, um, an official committee would, would obviously have numerous benefits, especially to, to town employees, to, to boards such as yourself, other boards. Uh, over the course of time, I think it's noticeable that different responsibilities get dispersed and some likely relate back to shared spaces, community events and things like that. So an established body, in, in our opinion, uh, would be tasked with focusing on implementing the, the plan itself, could take on community inquiries and communications and, uh, continue with follow-up action, uh, as, as needed, um, the nature of the, the items that came to be, which would alleviate a lot of burden on many of the groups and individuals that don't necessarily have the time or the resource or things that are outside of the scope of those, uh, you know, the boards and committees in the town. So the reason we're here is, uh, to, to ask for your support and an establishment of, of a permanent open space committee that can make decisions, uh, facilitate the implementation of the plan and manage any relevant open space parks and, and recreation items.
Yeah, makes a lot of sense to me. Now, we, are you thinking this would be elected or appointed positions?
Elected.
Elected?
So we looked into, um, sorry.
No, go.
Okay. Uh, we've looked into other towns that have something similar and towns that have events and towns that have great, um, you know, leadership in, in terms of their parks and the buildings and everything that, uh, is coming from it. And so the majority of them have either three or five member elected positions, so this would be establishing that, um, same exact setup, I guess you could say.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to it. I guess we would have to see how it's all written out, right? Like what, what would be, um, what would be your actual responsibilities, how everything would be reported? Funding is obviously always a huge thing, right? So, um, you know, a lot, a lot of what you're gonna try and determine what you do is gonna be based on funding and, you know, um, listen, I'm, I I love the town. I want, you know, to be able to do things that are better for the town, so. That, this is where your heart and soul's at, right? So, uh, it does make sense to, to try and give you guys some added responsibility, so to speak, on what, you know, what you think needs to be done. But I don't know, Debbie, do you have?
I, I, I don't, I mean, I just, the, um, unfortunately, the agenda item says next step for open space, so I just wanna not, you know, I don't think like an official vote of whether we're gonna set up a committee tonight would happen because it's just, this wording is not knowing that that's what's really put in, being put forth to the Board of Selectmen. But, yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to it.
Yeah, it's, so just like process-wise, I think, you know, we'd have to get that out of the agenda, right, which we could definitely do. And then then there will be an article town meeting, special town meeting?
Yeah.
Either one.
Yeah. And then, because that has to go, you, you, it has to go to the state. You know, the, the, everything has to get approved and then once it comes back, then we could have an election and we'll have to do like, say, hypothetically say it's just like the board's argument where it's three members, three-year terms. We'd have to have it kind of staggered, so.
Yeah, and that's, we're not asking you to set it up tonight.
No, 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 I'm just talking through the process, right?
We're saying, uh, I think this is the next step that we need in order to do some of the, because we have some big items on that open space plan and, and in order to we have so much potential in this town, in order to utilize that, that potential, we have to make this research slash step forward.
I think it makes a lot of sense. And I think, yeah, I mean, I definitely have my support, you know, um, I can't speak for the rest of the board, obviously, but I think that, let's kind of keep in communications, Jared, I know this is your.
Yeah, no, please.
So, so, I think we should try to get that on, on, at least that on an agenda to discuss that more thoroughly, make sure that we're, you know, there's no gotchas, but moving forward, getting that, uh, town meeting, makes sense to me.
Um, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I'm gonna put you on the spot. Cheryl, I'm sorry. Is there anything we're missing as far as if we're trying to? I'm sorry.
I was not prepared for that because I didn't know that's the one we're going today, so I don't feel comfortable in answering any of that.
Oh, yeah, please don't then.
But I will research that tomorrow when I go back into the office and then I can email yourself, Jared. And Brian and Amanda, if you'd like.
Sounds great.
The information that I have.
Okay, no, thank you. I, I do appreciate it because to, to Trevor's point is I know that there's gonna be a lot of procedures and we wanna make sure that we don't miss any.
In some towns, keep it as an appointment.
That's why we're here, we're, we're asking.
Go elected, so it's really up to the town.
Yeah, only downside, as elected officials, we, the downside, if they get, get the signatures, the, the, all of.
That's not such a downside, Trevor.
The campaign financing side of it, it's, it's, it's kind, it can be tricky if you don't know what you're doing, um, so like, there's, there is, it makes, it's a barrier to entry for sure, for a lot of people, you know, so. But, yes.
You're committed to the work, right?
Yeah.
It's only a little hurdle.
Absolutely.
So, so, yeah, no, but I, you know, honestly, I'm not just saying it. I do commend you guys. Thank you. Um, it does, it means a lot, so, um, yeah, so we'll find that out. We'll get that information together. Um, it does seem like, I mean, obviously we're not hearing too much from Carlos, but that's not, that's.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear him.
Yeah, we can right now.
So, I'm back on, I'm back, back in. No, I, as far as this committee, I, I have all the love and respect to the committee and what the things you're, you're doing, so logical next steps. I, I think we're all in agreeance that you guys, uh, can take this town further in our recreational department than we ever thought you could. Congrats to the work you've done to date and, um, you, you definitely have my support, that's for sure. Thank you.
All right, so then, uh, maybe do you have any other questions or?
Yeah, I have a quick question. So, um, I think, yeah, Brian nailed it in terms of like, the reason that we wanted to come was not to get a vote or anything like that, just to, to ask for support, open up the dialogue. So Jared, would you say that as the Board of Parks Commissioner, once Cheryl, your, you've researched a little bit, send us the information that we should connect with you as the point person on the select board?
Absolutely, yeah.
For next steps and, okay, perfect.
Yeah, because we'll have to, we just need to make sure that we're not missing any of those steps and, and, you know, what we need to do from our side to start, I'm assuming we need to start and then take it from there as far as getting it, um, you know, to town, town meeting floor and all that stuff and, and because then I don't even know who is gonna be, you know, funding and how we start it with funding. There's gonna be a lot of questions that we're gonna have to get answered, so, um, so, yeah, so, um, that, but that's, anything else that you guys can think?
No, I mean, this was the next step that you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't know really, how do you even call it a vote to that, um? So I guess there's really no vote to be had.
Yeah, I was a vote today, but that's.
Vote to take next steps.
So, um, yeah, so we'll, we'll obviously be in contact and then we'll take it from there and then as things come up, we'll, we'll bring it back to the board, our board and we'll take it from there. All right, thank you all, honestly, thank you.
Thanks. Administrator, anything?
I don't have anything after, I think, was it the last meeting that I talked? I think, um.
Caught up for a while?
I think we're caught up.
Don't jinx yourself, okay?
We do, we have public, if I have public input, I'm gonna limit it to three minutes for anybody if they wanna per person. Okay. Public input.
I'll, I'll take this opportunity. Thank you so much. Just wanted to remind folks who are watching at home that in-person early voting for the March primary starts this Saturday. So it takes place right here in this room at the, uh, police station. We'll be here Saturday, um, beginning at eight AM until two PM and then continues uh, Monday through Thursday, eight AM until four PM, and the final day will be Friday, March first, eight AM until twelve PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna do signatures now and then, is everyone else set? Yeah, signatures and then we'll adjourn.
I guess the only thing I'd say is we're in the process of putting together the town budget. Uh, myself and all that. I'm waiting for the department heads to turn in all their budgets. And we'll be meeting with all the department heads over the next month or so, putting together a budget for the selectmen to look at, but.
It feels like it's a never-ending process.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, so we're doing that and we're doing union negotiations with, um, three of the four unions anyway at this point, so. That's what I've been busy working on.
Sorry, the one month, the events are so much slower.
I, I question that. I might go back and look at that.
Yeah.
I don't know why it's, I'm, I don't, I thought we were supposed to bill for three or four months before we do a bid, so I'm not sure. I'm sure it's right, but I'll go check it.
No, town administrator.
Super excited to get those, really.
Yeah, I have a signing. Just nice to like see something.
Carlos, are you virtual signing?
Can you read it off to me line by line? I guess the internet in Canada is not as great as we were told.
Screw you up here. Signature right here.
The warrant is open for submissions, it's crazy.
Yeah.
And we're doing another town meeting. Didn't we just do a town meeting?
Make sure you wear your sunglasses this time, Debbie.
Yeah, I know. No, I think we have somebody who's helped me with the lights, so we might be in a better shape.
One, two. I've got two.
Two there, and this is banner.
Signature's getting sloppier and sloppier.
Oh, my, so that's, this one you actually still need to center. There's two on this one, right?
How's the baby doing?
Baby's good. Abby's birthday.
Abby's birthday tonight?
All right, so, who else signed up? Already?
Well done.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion being? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Joy Canada, Carlos.